Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting of the four of our school committee facilities and operations subcommittee to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Present.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Before we get started, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I'd ask all of you in attendance with me today to please join me in a salute to the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. We're gonna take up one item, because I think it's gonna be brief in nature, and then we'll get right on to the MOA, excuse me, the MOU with the police department or school department regarding SROs, okay? So, thank you, gentlemen. We're just waiting on the superintendent who should be in momentarily, and then we'll get right into that. First order for discussion is a dedication proposal of the Doran Playground. This was an item that was, a request that was made through the chair, which I had forwarded to Mr. Pacico and also to the superintendent. There's a request to dedicate the Doran Playground area at the, I'll be, in memory, excuse me, of, you know, longtime city counselor and friend Al Als. I think it's a great suggestion. My dealings with Mr. Als when he was a counselor was always, he was always an advocate for education, always stood up for the kids. He's done a great deal of good for this community. I know that he and his family have been very generous in both their time and resources for this community, and so, you know, something I can certainly support. But I'll turn it over to my colleagues. They'd like to add anything to that, or if they want to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we name the playground area in memory of Alfredo Als.
Is there a second by Mr. Hetzel? Any further discussions, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so just a couple of brief things. Mr. Als was a special person, and Mr. Coogan and I went to a, an event that honored him from the SCA. On behalf of the school committee, we gave a citation. On your behalf, it was a great event that honored all the good work that he's done. So, Mr. Coogan had talked about potentially having something named for him, and we wondered what was appropriate. And since the Doran School was very close on Columbia Street to his restaurant that he owned for many years, the TA Restaurant, naturally he had adopted that school. He served on the building committee, he, for about 20 years or more. He had the fifth grade graduation dinner at the TA Restaurant. He's donated thousands of dollars and his family to, not only the Doran School, but students and children throughout the greater Fall River area. He was very passionate about the school and Columbia Street in general. And the best part about Mr. Als was, he didn't brag, and he didn't do it to get any accolades for it, he just did it because it was the right thing to do. So, I do think this is very appropriate, and I'd ask for your support.
Hetzel, anything to add? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Just want to entertain a motion to refer that to the full committee for consideration. Is there a motion?
No.
Made by Mr. Agia, or seconded by Mr. Hetzel? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. If you could refer that to the full committee, please. Next item for discussion is the discussion of the SRO memorandum of agreement, an SOP. I want to first, as chair, facilities and operations, welcome Chief DePere, Sergeant Strong, and the Fall River Police Department. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Members have in their packet a copy of the current MOA that's in effect. It was approved by the school committee on August 20th, 2018. It's on tonight's agenda. I'll open it up for, first, let me open it up to both the chief and the superintendent. If you'd like to add anything for the committee prior, if not, I'll open it up for discussions or questions from the committee, and we'll move from there. Mr. Superintendent?
So, we're, you know, each year, the committee discusses the relationship with the SRO overall. I think we've had a very successful year. I'm very appreciative of the support that the Fall River Police Department and the leadership of the chief and Sergeant Strong have given us, and there's always room for improvement. But I've been, I have nothing negative to say. I think the working relationship's a good one. It's based on honest, open communication. We've been able to have great communication. It's a wealthy year, and I look forward to continuing within that spirit as we move forward.
Thank you, Superintendent. Chief?
I agree with the superintendent. It's been a good year. We speak quite often about different things going on in the school. There's a few other things that we're working on, some programs and things that we'd like to add. I think the MOU and the policy as they are work well for both sides, I think they're fair. But I'm open to any suggestions that the committee might have. But I too look forward to another good year.
Sergeant Strong? Okay. I appreciate you being here, and thank you. Let me start off by just saying this, that, you know, obviously I've read the memorandum, you know, I think it's pretty clear. I think it's a good memorandum. I think it defines the roles of both the police and SROs, as well as the school department, what the expectations are on both sides. I've been pleased with the, with the SRO presence in our schools. You know, we live in a different time now than we did many years ago, where, you know, the police officers in most of our schools, if not all of our schools, wasn't necessarily needed back in the day, it was just a high school. And so, obviously in the change of times, I feel comfortable knowing that there's an SRO in our buildings, and even if there's splitting time, that uncertainty of what building that officer may be in, is, again, it's still welcoming. And I can tell you that the 14 years on the school committee, it's been a pleasure to have the men and women of the Fall River Police Department in our schools. I think we work well with our staff. I think this memorandum defines the roles of each. Certainly if you, chief, or your line staff see an issue, feel free to speak with the superintendent about any changes to this. We're amenable to those. We want it to work for both sides. But I agree, I think it works well now as it exists, and I will continue to support it unless, at this time, both you gentlemen had requests of the committee to make changes. So, I'll leave it at that. Excuse me, I'll leave it at that, and I'll open up for any comments or questions from colleagues. Mr. Hetzel?
I just want to echo the sentiments of the chairman. I feel the same way. Unless there's something that you'd like to see changed, I'm very happy, having, you know, the agreement that we have in front of us, and I thank you very much for your help with the students.
Mr. Agia?
So, when I looked at this, I would echo, you know, I do think it's good to have the school resource officers. Laws change, things change, and what people can and can't do in the schools change. So, I do think we need to look at some of these things, because we want to be on the same page with what the purpose is. It costs a lot of money, so whether you're paying, we're paying, you know, I think it's about $600,000, $700,000 a year, and I think we need to just continually look to make improvements where we can, and make sure that we're more efficient and doing what we need to do. When I got the two documents, I looked through them just to see if the things that are in here are being followed. So, I made a couple of highlights in here, and I'm just gonna throw some things out to see if they're being followed. If not, maybe people can get back to us with some of those answers. The standard operating procedure and the MOU, I would say are the two different documents, but are they both equal? Is one more?
Memorandum, so they complement each other. The memorandum outlines the agreement for the presence of the officers in the school and partnership, and the policy dictates how that interaction is gonna take place and how the officers are gonna conduct themselves in this. So, that's the difference. So, like I said, they complement each other. There's no conflict between them, and that's really good for the purpose of each document.
So, on page three of the standard operating procedure, under 10, where it just says, "Follow established protocols" in the MOU, and I might go back and forth, so I apologize ahead of time, but...
It's on page four?
Oh, I'm looking in the old one, sorry. It's under the...
It's number 10, but it's, I think, the form.
Yeah. So, when you look at, just as follow the protocols in the MOU, which is what we kind of articulated there, but my question on that is, there's certain times in the school where school resource officers are either handcuffed, you know, lack of a better way to say it, or can't do certain things to control students when they're out of control in the classroom or in the school. And I think that's one of the major things that I'd like to see through this discussion, is to clarify what that is and what that's not, with the changes in laws.
So, that's articulated in the MOU. So, this is their, the SOP is a police document. It's not ours.
Right, but...
The SOP is their document.
Yep.
Our document's the MOU.
Yeah.
So, the law required an MOU and, on the police side, to have SOP. That's how they run their standard operating procedures. So, that's their internal document, is, how do you call it? Lack of a better term, it's their bible for how they operate and command and control of this particular unit. But on our side, the MOU clearly dictates that SROs aren't to be used for routine disciplinary actions and all those things in line with...
Yeah, I want to get, I have a lot of questions on that.
What the law says.
I'm just looking to start on this particular piece, and that question's gonna come up again later on in what they do, what their roles are.
Right, so their role, like the superintendent's, the role is outlined in the MOU. For example, on the second page, it shows examples of the activities that they'll engage in. So, we don't necessarily need to, I mean, we could restate it in the policy, but we just...
So, let's just take that, because that leads to the question of what I'm trying to get at. So, on the MOU on page two, it articulates examples of activities they will engage in. It doesn't say anywhere in that document, this document, that it'll help maintain an orderly environment in the school, where I think is one of the major roles of us having SROs and paying that kind of money for an SRO, is so that when things start to get out of control, kids get out of control, whatever happens in the school, that they have to maintain order. I think that's one of the major pieces of why we even have an SRO. When I look at this list, it doesn't indicate anywhere in there that maintaining educational environment without kids being out of control, starting fights with administrators, whatever, doesn't say it anywhere in there.
So, the reason, the reason for that, I think, is when we developed this MOU and the policy, the thinking is that routine disciplinary matters, discipline throughout the school, is best handled by the school until they can handle it. And that's with the first line, handling requests for calls for service in and around the school. So, in and around, so in would be the administrators that you're describing. So, we don't, we didn't want to get into a situation where an SRO may see a kid who's raising their voice to a teacher, and then they intercede and escalate the situation before the teacher has an opportunity to try to de-escalate it. Maybe they know the student better, maybe they're familiar with the background, and they're able to better handle it. So, we didn't want them to jump in unless they're asked to jump in. So, we assume, I guess, that the administrators and the teachers know when they need assistance, and then we'll...
Yeah, I think that's where...
I think that was the plan.
But I think that's sometimes where the rubber meets the road. And since the legislature passed the different laws related to whether students can be arrested or not, I think there's a discrepancy between what the police officers think they can do and what we need them to do and what the law is. I think there's a discrepancy there. We had a situation, for instance, in one of the schools that was reported to us by the superintendent, where the kids were getting out of control, and the principal couldn't control it, and the police officer said, "Well, there's nothing I can do. I can't, I can't do anything here, because the law ties my hands. I can't control this." Whereas in the past, that kid might have been taken out of school for disorderly conduct or anything else and removed from the situation. It was said, "No, we can't do that." And then, so we've got security guards, we've got them, nobody can stop the situation.
There's still, I mean, are you familiar with this incident?
Not that particular incident, but what I can say is, because of the decriminalization of certain juvenile laws, it does put some limitations on what we can and can't do inside of the school. Like, before we could, if a student, like you're saying, was acting out in class, there was the charge of disturbing a school assembly, that law no longer exists on the books.
Gone.
So, we're kind of limited on what we can and can't do. That's why certain things, until it escalates to a crime that we can act upon, it's considered routine school discipline right now.
Yep.
And that's supposed to be handled by administrators and school security. I mean, the SROs are always there. They stand by in case it escalates into a situation where they have to get involved.
Right, but I know it's an issue, clearly an issue, and I think it's an issue for the legislature. I think it's an issue for, people need to clarify what's the options and what is not options, but we have to be consistent in what we can, whether we can get involved or not get involved.
But this is in line with the Attorney General's recommendation for what MOUs need to say based on what the law says. So, our SROs are not security guards, and they don't handle out of control students. If there is a crime committed or an assault, they follow their Chapter 90 authority, which is different than the authorities that we have as school administrators. But they don't, and they're not supposed to, be involved in school discipline based on our code or other infractions that are normal, everyday occurrences in schools. So, if there was a riot, how would it, like, you know, the SROs would be there to help with that, but if there was a student that's out of control, we've done everything we can do until the student has a crime.
Let them get out of control.
Well, that's our responsibility. That's not their responsibility.
But does that make any sense?
Yeah, but if I can just add, they also have to, they also have liability on their side. They have an SOP, and we might not like the fact that a student's getting out of control, but until a crime is committed, it's no different than if I was outside in an opal and acting like a knucklehead, but I wasn't committing any crimes, they're not gonna come up and lock me up. They're gonna try to defuse the situation, de-escalate the situation, but they can't effectuate any kind of police action in terms of arrest. And correct me if I'm wrong, until there's a crime committed. If you do, you're opening yourself up, the officer and the department's gonna open themselves up to a complaint that, why did you, you know, attempt to take custody of an individual, a minor nonetheless, if they haven't committed a crime? So, I know what you're saying, Mr. Agia. If students are unruly, if they're out of control, I think that's a judgment call by the SRO in that situation as to whether or not it rises to the level where they need to intervene. And I think if we start setting policy, it handcuffs them into, well, if it doesn't fall within these four corners, I can't, I can't do it or I can do it. I think leaving it as it is and let them use their discretion and their training to dictate their actions, I think is maybe the better course, but that's just my opinion. But I'll let you continue.
I think that, I think there's more that can be done personally to maintain order by the SROs. I think there's been inconsistency amongst the SROs and amongst police in general, plus the legislature, everybody involved in cases like this, where we need to make sure that we have and maintain an order in the school. And there's been many, many occasions that students get out of control, and we let it go a little too far, and that's a dangerous, in my opinion, as one member. That's a dangerous precedent to have, to have uniformed police officers in a school, sitting by waiting when we know a kid's escalating, is gonna get out of control, and not handling it, because the law says, it's criminalized it, so let's just wait till he does something to commit a crime, and then we can act. I think that's very dangerous, whether it's an issue that we have to take to the legislature to change it, or the courts. There's plenty of problems with the law, the way that it's written.
But the law is the law, Kevin. So, we have an MOU that's in line with the law. We follow it. We don't want our SROs actually involved in anything unless school administration says, "Hey, I need your help."
What do you do when the school administration says, "I need your help," and they say, "Sorry, I can't."
I don't know what situation you're talking about that that happens.
So, I'm not aware of that incident, and that should never happen. At a minimum, they should at least try to talk to the student.
Right.
If the administrator's asking for help, then they should get involved. So, I would say that if that happens, then the administrator, the principal, needs to call the supervisor and let them know what happened, because that's not how they're trained and that's not our policy.
As the supervisor, you've never heard of any situations like that?
I've never received the call from a school administrator saying, "Hey, I spoke to the SRO, I requested help, and I was denied." I've never received a call like that.
How many arrests were there this year in schools?
Oh, that, I, most of the arrests are summons.
Right. So, I just think we need to talk about that further, because I do think that there's plenty of issues with that. My concern is that if that's the case, let's say, we just talked about it, $700,000 for the SROs. If the only time the SRO can get involved to help us maintain order, why not just call 911? Because we're technically saying, "Okay."
We're hoping that they're gonna get involved before someone gets hurt. So, a crime, right, assault is a crime. If he threatens to strike a teacher and puts them in fear, that's a crime. The SRO can act on that before they actually hit the teacher, so, and just the mere presence of the SRO, I would say, will calm most students down. I know there, you know, there's exceptions.
Yeah.
And then, let's not forget the threats from the outside, which we, you know, wish weren't there. So, I think the benefit of having the SRO there outweighs any potential problems that we can resolve, just by being aware of them. We just, someone just needs to tell us that there's a problem. And we've moved people in the past that were problems, either from school to school or right out of the program. We're willing to do that, and the superintendent and I talk about the fact, as I mentioned, Sergeant Strong is leaving, and I spoke to the superintendent before I assigned someone to it, to make sure that it was someone that was gonna work well with the school. So, these conversations take place, and maybe they're not getting to your level, and the conversations you're having about these issues are not getting to us, and apparently not to the superintendent. And if they did, they'd be addressed, absolutely.
There's no doubt that there's controversy amongst all people involved in schools. Officers, administrators, teachers, everywhere across Commonwealth, because of the effect this law is having on maintaining order in a school.
Not just in the school, in the community.
Yeah.
Those laws apply when they're out of school. So, I agree with you 100 percent.
You know, your first offense, second offense, you get rid of the first offense...
Absolutely.
So, that it's a second offense, but if you can't charge them with the first offense, how do you get to the second offense? There's issues here, and all I'm asking for is that we have this dialogue amongst all of us, and not just say, "Well, it doesn't happen," because it does happen. There's issues in the schools that we need to make sure that the kids are safe and the kids aren't out of control in the school.
I support any changes that you want to make to the law, because I agree with you that it's not, it's not serving, it's not serving the children the way it is, and it's certainly not serving the community or the schools.
Right. Number three on the MOU, where it says the overtime and stuff, we had an issue in the past about overtime getting approved through the schools. Is that still okay this year? How did that go? Like, as far as, like, I think it was the superintendent has to approve any overtime. Does that include the evening stuff on number three?
The evening stuff is very, very minimal.
Yeah.
What we're charged for is essentially ELT time, and that's, and that's pretty much it.
And the traffic, I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, no, same.
And the traffic issue has been resolved by the structuring of the 40 hours, eight hours, we've been able to accommodate, and I know we've been using some of our security in order to assist with some of that, particularly at the high school. So, I know that was, you know, some of, I think, well, a percentage of the overtime was based on details, getting students safely in a building and out of the building at the end of the day with traffic and stuff like that. But that seems, I didn't hear much about it this year, so I'm assuming that was managed well.
Much better.
Much better.
So, number three, it talks about SROs needing to be there in the evening for different events, so is there anybody in the school that knows that, or is that just strictly on the police side? So, if I'm a school resource officer and I want to stay for a PTO meeting, or, you know, whatever the meetings are to get comp time or whatever I get, does the school have to have a say in that?
Well, it's usually the school administration that's requesting, I think.
They can't decide on their own to stay, just because...
That's what I'm saying, the school has some sort of...
Absolutely, school has total...
Peace in that.
The principal will ask the SRO to stay for the dance or...
Right.
The PT, the parent-teacher meetings or whatever it is.
We're involved, is the point.
You're making the decision. The officer on their own cannot decide they're gonna attend a dance or attend a meeting and get paid or get flex time for it. That can't happen.
The principal maybe didn't know, so they just, if they show up, it's with the request of the school.
Someone from the school is requesting it.
When they leave, it says on number four, they'll notify the principal when they're not around. I know when I had worked in the schools, that was an issue, where just knowing who's there, you know, does that seem that that's a policy that's being implemented on a regular basis, or...
That's why that's there, is because of issues in the past, so that's why we put it in, and the sergeant can speak to whether or not.
I know that the SROs, they're primary schools, they're in communication with the principals all the time in those schools, and a lot of them have to leave those schools to go to their secondary schools. So, they've been telling the principal, "Hey, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be in the building. The principals have all their cell phone numbers. They have my cell phone number, so if anything ever transpires when they're not in the building, we can get them back there."
Right. Number seven talks about equally, which is probably, it says, "To the extent possible when you're in multiple places." Is that an issue? As far as if I have three schools, am I even there for doing the third, or are people just...
Well, for the most part, they do the best that they can to get to the other schools. Sometimes, as we all know, Durfee's a little bit busier than the other schools, so those two are more constantly tied up at Durfee rather than going every day to the elementary schools that are around Durfee. But for the most part, like Cus, he goes to his secondary schools, Morton, she goes to her secondary schools, RPA, they go over to Stone School, Talbot, they go over to their schools.
So, when does that, how does that get articulated to the principals to know? I know somewhere else in here it says, there's like monthly reports and stuff.
We do do monthly reports about reports that they've taken, but there's no set schedule where we notify the principal, "Hey, I'm gonna be at, let's say, Green School from this time to..." They go at all different times. That way, nobody ever can say, "Okay, if they're watching the school, now I know when the SRO's gonna be here." So, there's no set time that they go.
I'm just looking out for the principals of the schools. So, if I'm a principal of a school and the SRO isn't around as much as I'd like, equally, let's say, then how do...
They can call, they can contact the supervisor, which, to this point, hasn't happened.
And try and rectify it or figure it out.
Right.
They have access to that.
Right, they have access to, they all have my number.
And most of the time, for instance, the Durfee piece with Tansey Spencer, or Sergeant Strong would end up answering that.
Right.
So, rather than take someone out of Durfee, he would come here, he would go to Tansey, or wherever he was needed at that time. And I gotta tell you that the principals know that if they can't get a hold of Sergeant Strong and they can't get a hold of their SROs, they're calling me, and I'm getting a hold of someone.
I would hope they're calling the station.
Well, if it's that kind of thing, yeah, it's usually not that kind of thing.
If it's Tansey, then they should be calling the police station. But most of the time, I'm answering the phone unless I'm tied up at another school on another call.
The piece about splitting up as much as possible, so if we have two school resource officers, what is the expectation for them during the day as far as...
Well, there's only two schools with multiple SROs, and that's Durfee and RPA. And I can tell you that at RPA, normally one is at, on the high school level, and one is on the middle school level. They alternate the lunches to keep one in the hallways and one in the cafeteria. At Durfee, it's a little bit different, because the lunchroom, there's a lot more kids in the lunchroom, so during lunches, both SROs are in the lunchroom, because that's the...
But outside of lunch, they're not supposed to be hanging out together?
Well, they can walk around together, but they're supposed to be separated as much as possible.
To manage the whole...
Right.
The part B, on the school department, this is where I was talking about the criminal conduct, and it says the school department personnel are responsible for discipline, including enforcement of the code of conduct, unless criminal conduct is involved. I think that points to the other discussion that we were having, that where is that line? And I'm not looking to go back over it, but that, it's kind of, it's in here, and I'm saying, where is that line? And I think that's where, I think there is some, some problems with that. Couple pages down, this talks about assignment of posts and consultation with the building principal, and supervisor meeting monthly with the building principal. Does that happen in all schools?[1793.54]
Where is that?
It's on, uh...
Sorry, I have wrong numbers on my page.
On the right header. I read it in here.
It was on the four, one, two, and three, or three. Supervisor re responsibility, chain of command, I think. Right above the SRO training.
It's the last one in there, right? It says something about the SRO supervisor meeting with the principal's monthly.
I think it's a minimum of monthly. You know, so, we've had, I just wanna be real clear. We've had no issues this year with any complaints that I've received from my personnel as to patrol order, call for response. Yeah, we've had no out of control situations that we couldn't handle that we had to call the police on. I know there was an incident at RPA, police handled that according to protocol that I investigated myself and agreed that the, very clear that protocol was followed. In terms of the open communication, not one principal has said to me that they haven't been in regular communication with the SROs in their building. I think Sergeant Strong's absolutely right that the rotating officers from their primary and secondary schools with that phone call piece, again, I've had no complaints from principals saying, the officers didn't come if I needed them and they weren't in my building, they've always come, backup. If that person couldn't, someone else came. And these are all non-nine one one issues. And I think that the final part of the questioning around the requirement and the legal stuff that, you know... We can talk about what's right and what's wrong within the law, but the law is the law. Unless that changes, it's kind of moot to say we don't agree with, that's the law. And we can't arrest kids for disruption of assembly anymore, things that we used to do in schools and there's a reason for that. But I think that this MOU is a living document, is a strong one because we wrote it together. But we also based it on the recommendations of the AD and our associations. I know his association was involved and my association was involved in making recommendations to what these required documents now look like.
I understand. So, the question was, the supervisory will assign posts in school buildings and not school grounds in consultation with the building principal is number two. And number three was the supervisor will meet monthly with the building principals and the SRO. My question was, does that happen on a monthly basis?
As much as I can, yes. I don't get to get to every building all the time because, again, some buildings are more, there's more calls for service than other buildings. So, I spend the majority of my time in like the primary locations because the way the SROs are set up is they're, the buildings that are their primary are their primary for a reason, because they're needed more in those schools. So, I would spend my time more in those schools than in the other schools.
Yeah, I'm not being critical of you, so please don't take it personal. All I'm looking at is what's black and white on the page. It says the supervisor will meet monthly with the building principal to share open communication and operational transparency. That to me sounds like on a monthly basis, I have seven SROs and I have seven buildings. Every month, that person should be having a meeting to go over operational transparency and open communication. That's the only reason why I'm asking that question because if it's not happening, I think it should because that's a requirement of the MOU. That's really all.
We may need a little clarity there because it's sixteen buildings and seven SROs. So, some of those SROs are not assigned to those, they're assigned, but they're not there a lot. So, I would think that it would be difficult to hit all of those on a monthly basis.
I would...
I mean, the middle schools are the assignments, the assigned schools.
Just me looking at it, quite frankly, I would not say every, like, I would say it should be a meeting monthly with a principal that's assigned, like, that's primary.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? I don't think you need to go to the schools.
To everyone every...
Very little stuff, there's a lot of action going on.
Sure.
But at a minimum, if I'm reading this, it should be a monthly meeting.
Yeah.
I can tell you that at the primary locations, I met regularly with principals. At the primary locations, yes, I did.
I think it can be tweaked. You said that every principal's got your phone number that can reach you.
Yes.
So, rather than making a formal meeting, you know, a SRO supervisor will meet as needed with the building principals and have some sort of contact information for the supervisor if needed. I think it just, you can get cleaned up. I don't think, I understand what Mr. Agia is saying. It says that we'll be meeting, so that we should be having them, but I think we can still achieve the same intent. A principal needs a meeting, they have your phone number, they can call you and say, absolutely, can you come by the school? I have some issues that I need to speak to you, I'll find. I think the intent of that is, as it says, to ensure open communication and operational transparency. So, that may be happening on a day to day basis without the formal meeting. As the day goes on, I'm sure the principals interact with the SROs on a daily basis, probably. But I, to Mr. Agia's point, I think what it's saying is that, because it sounds like it needs to be more formal and I'm not so sure it needs to be unless there's been an issue where it had to be. But I think that's something we could probably clean up. They have your number, that's my concern.
Yes.
If they needed you, could they reach you?
Yes, they could.
And if they could, if they reach you, would you be responsive enough to, and you are? So, again, maybe some wordsmithing there, some little cleanup. But I'd be, personally, I think I'd be in favor of at least the beginning of the year because the SROs may change. They may need an introduction to their principal. Maybe within the first week of school, that there'd be at least a meeting with the SROs and that building principal to discuss what the plan will be for the school year. May be appropriate. And then obviously, there'll be their check ins as they go along. But like, you're gonna be, someone else is gonna be filling your role, you know, to have that contact with building principals early on in the school year so everybody knows who the SROs are in the building. They may change in the schools, I don't know. They've been pretty consistent, but in the event they did change, you know, something like that. It doesn't necessarily have to be in here. If it is, then obviously, I think it would be clearer, but I think within the first week, the SROs and the principal should have a sit down. What are your expectations? We may have a new principal who doesn't really understand what the SRO does in the building or how long they've been there. To have that conversation with the building principal early on to set, okay, this is, I understand what your role is, this is what we'll take care of, this is what you'd like to see from us, this is what I need from you. Beginning of the school year and then boom, everybody's off on the same page. I'd like to see something like that in there as opposed to requiring SROs to meet or you to meet with the building principal every month. If there's an issue, there's gonna be meeting anyway.
Right. Well, when the SROs go to their secondary location, they're supposed to be meeting with the principal anyway. They're not just supposed to show up and like say, hey, okay, I'm here and then leave. They're supposed to go in, walk around the building, check in with the principal, with maybe the vice principal and the administration, make sure there's no issues. And a lot of them actually check in with the security guards that are in the school as well.
I think that some of the stuff that's in here needs to be in here because it's, I haven't worked in a school as an administrator. I can tell you, it's not an easy decision to make whether things are going well or not well, to call you to complain, to call a superintendent's office to complain or any bosses. That's just the reality of working in a, in a school. You don't just, when things may not be working so well, I'm gonna call a superintendent and say they're not doing it. Reality is, people don't do that. If I don't do it in your, you know, the levels of your department. So, by putting in some of these pieces is like giving them chance. So, if I'm asking you how things are going and I happen to tell you, hey, you know, I'd like this to happen, I'd like, it's different than me having to take that initiative as a principal or school administrator and say, Dr. Malone, the SROs aren't doing this, I'm not happy about this. So, that doesn't happen. It just really doesn't. So, I think some of the pieces in here are important just to give the dialogue and give the opportunity for principals to weigh in on a, on a regular basis. There's a, in, the one about evaluations, the standard operating procedure actually, I think contradicts to what's in the Roman numeral five where it says evaluations be formed by the CBA. Because the operating procedures indicates that the supervisor will meet with all school administration prior to completing the evaluation, but this part doesn't.
Right. So, what we're saying is that all evaluations conform with the collective bargaining agreement, which is a whole separate issue. But the supervisor by policy has to take into account and weigh the opinion or the feedback from the adminis, that's what we're saying. They have to weigh the feedback from the administrators as to how the officer's doing the job.
So, if I'm a, if I'm a principal and it's time to evaluate the SRO in my building, either yourself or whoever would be in that role should talk to me and say, I'm doing the evaluation, or do you, you know, like, give your feedback.
Do you have any concerns, you know, how's he doing, anything you wanna add?
Does that happen?
Did you do the evaluation just yet?
I did. I didn't agree, it's okay.
It's fine. I mean, it, it just, but it just food for thought that, just to say, you know, if there's a weigh in from the schools, you know, to weigh in.
Yeah, we definitely want that.
And my last question is on the page about the reports of duties and activities provided to the...
I'm sorry. Can I just go back to that for one second, if you mind? I'm sorry.
No, no.
So, is it, so the officers are okay with the school staff providing input on their evaluation that you folks do? And they don't really have an issue with that?
It's as a general, just a general feel for how the officer is because part of, some of the categories for the evaluation are gonna, they ask specific questions about the officer, how they do, how they interact with people, are they polite, things like that. So, we wanna know, do you think they're polite? People who are complaining to us that they're not, and that could impact.
And it's okay if that's the case. I just found it odd that the officers would, like, so in other words, the officer essentially is sort of being coevaluated because the building principal's gonna provide some feedback on their performance that gets captured in their evaluation, so.
But it's weighted, it's kinda weighted.
Yeah, okay. But that's fine, as long as it's okay.
Maybe to make it easier to relate is if a supervisor is constantly getting complaints from the public about an officer's conduct, that's gonna reflect in their evaluation because they've gotten complaints and so it's kinda the same thing.
Similar to that, okay. So, that's something that's across the board.
There's weight given to it, it's not...
It's a piece of it, okay.
Yeah, it's a piece, yeah.
I was just thinking when I was listening, so I'm like, wait a minute. So, if I'm the officer and the school principals, you know, sort of evaluate my performance and sharing it with my supervisor and then it's getting, taking into account in my evaluation, is it my supervisor, my sergeant evaluating me or is it the school? And so, but as long as it's worked out and it's worked and it hasn't been, you know, been an issue, because again, I think we have to keep the lines clear.
Right.
You folks will handle yours, your offices and chain of command and will handle our people and there's, you know, policies in place for the superintendent to handle what he needs to in his collective bargaining agreements on our end that we handle. So, just wanna make sure that that's clear so that we don't have issues where officers are feeling like school staff are evaluating that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I think, I mean, I think evaluation's not that strong anyway.
Not that strong.
The police evaluation system is not overly strong to worry, have anybody worry about, to be quite frank.
Yeah, you could say that the, it's governed by the collective bargaining agreement, so the impact is not...
It's not very...
Probably not the same as what you're used to in the, on the school side.
The, talking back about evaluations, I mean, part of me just says that if we have a school, if we have a SRO in the school, the principal should be able to, and I think it's more be, it's through these meetings, just give their opinion, like, what if I don't want the principal, what if I don't want the person back? Or what if the person's great and I wanna write something up? Like, they should have access to.
They're free to write letters or request transfers.
Good, bad and differences.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we encourage that.
My last question was on the, no, like the thirty day reports, you know, that get sent. Does the schools ever see those? So, if I'm in school A and I have an SRO in my building and there's reports related to the duties and activities for that SRO and this person's in my school, does that principal ever see those reports?
I believe you mentioned that.
No.
But you do give a monthly report.
Yes, we do a monthly report. So, what happens is the SRO submit their monthly reports and then I do my own report to my supervisor and I submit their reports with my report and it all, it all gets kept, goes in a folder for the entire school year.
When does the principal of the school see that?
It doesn't, it doesn't say that. It's just that if we wanna see it, we can. We don't, principals don't wanna look at those reports.
So, the reports themselves, they can't have, they're protected for the most part. Some, some they could, but for the most part, they would get a redacted version, we're doing it good. But a general overview of the activity in the school, that could be provided.
I don't agree with what the superintendent just said, that we wouldn't, we shouldn't want those.
Well, why would we?
Why would a principal want a report of the activities of the SRO in their building?
We have, if we, if anyone, I haven't been asked for that in three years. If anyone wanted it, we have it.
Once again, it goes to the same thing as I just mentioned. You're expecting principals and administrators to ask for those things. If they ask for those things, it's gonna be looked on negatively potentially. So, people don't do it, just the facts. So, if we, if we said, okay, you get a report, here's a report of activities in the school, I don't think that's a big deal.
I don't either, but I think for the most part, the principals know about the activities of the SRO anyway.
They're the ones that are calling the SROs.
Because the SRO and the principals are in constant contact.
The SROs don't do anything in our buildings without the principals knowing. That's the bottom line. Now, the greatest part of this relationship is what happens outside of school. Because what they do for us outside of school, they bring the knowledge of stuff that's happening outside of school and alert us as to, hey, this is going on outside and then worry about inside the school. So, I mean, those kinds of, that information is, it's every day, sharing of information every day.
I, my last just point, I guess, is I think some of the issues that I brought up are valid. I do think we should talk about it more. And I do think there's room for improvement in some of the aspects of utilizing our SROs to keep our schools safe and controlled in an educational environment. And for the school side to just say that everything's hunky dory and there's no issues, I don't agree with that.
But Kevin, I mean, don't you...
I do think that we need to control it a little better. That's all my point is, I'm not trying to get into a fight with anybody, just the fact that the matter is. The society and schools right now are reflective of that. Needs to, when you come to school, you need to be there for education and not causing mayhem in our schools. And we, as far as my one person's vote, is to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on SROs to make sure that that happens. That's basically my only point. With that, I...
Mr. Hetzel? On that, maintaining control and order and control and all that, there's only so much we can do and it's the law. That's, our hands are tied. They can talk to them and we appreciate it when you offer that and the administration tries and the teachers try to calm these kids down. But at the end of the day, we're all subject to the law. And the law says you can do X, you know, when Y happens. And if Y doesn't happen, we can't do X, all we can do is try to talk to kids. So, I think there's nothing we can do there. It's up to the legislature to change some of their laws like we've talked about and I agree with you. Those laws need to change and everybody here agrees, I think, that some of these laws are too lenient now and we can't do anything to these students prior to getting really out of panic, like you're saying. So, I agree, but I think we're doing everything that we can do now, right? There's something else we could do. I'm sure we'd all be talking about it in regards to maintaining order and control. And again, it's all about the legislature, right? They make the laws, we follow them. I'd love to have more SROs. I'd love to have more SROs, I'd love to have them in all the schools, but of course, you know, they cost money, so we can't have them, that's why we're splitting them up, they're bouncing around from school to school. So unless there's some more grants, or all of a sudden, uh, we find a pot of gold, that's not gonna happen. And as far as the monthly meetings that we were talking about, referring to, I agree with the chair, as needed, right? Beginning of the year, um, change in a role, new principal, new SRO, new supervisor, new SRO supervisor, that's really it, I don't think that language, I don't think it needs to say, has to mean. It's as needed, as long as they can connect with you, that's great, and the reports, I feel the same way. Principals know what's going on in their school, if they don't, I mean, we got another problem, we have another issue. The principals should absolutely know what the SROs are doing, and I feel that they do. That's just my take on it, again, very happy with the service provided, if there's changes that you'd like to see, um, please let me know, because I'll absolutely advocate for them. If those two, Mr. Superintendent, there's something you'd like to see changed, if you're not happy with something, if you think we can do a better job, we can change it, just let us know. Thank you.
I yield. So I'll just say this, that, you know, in addition to what we all discussed today, I mean, I think the value, God's at its total cost of having SROs in the schools, has been proven time and time again, whether it's through the report it's built, proactive stuff that's going on, the information that's being shared that's going on in the streets, that gets communicated to our staff, so that they're better prepared to deal with stuff going on typically, beginning of the school year, disputes that haven't been resolved over the summertime, that stuff, you know, and I know it goes on, because I've worked with some of those offices, so I, 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 I know that that happens. I think it's beneficial, I don't agree that the police should be intervening on school conduct unless it rises to the level of a criminal offense, whether we like it or not. Disruptive students, disruptive individuals, whether they're in a school setting or not, still have to be handled the same way. You can't change the way we do business because of the environment we're in, you can't police one thing in a school differently than we police in the community. The law is the law, if you can't arrest somebody in a parking lot, then you can't arrest someone in a school for similar behaviors, and some of that, I understand, it's concerning, it's disruptive, but the legislature's been clear, disturbing a school assembly does not, no longer exist, and so, it is what it is. I, I don't necessarily agree with it, I think it does prohibit your offices from, from intervening and maybe preventing stuff from getting to a different level, but if that's not a tool that's available to, to your offices, then they have to be crafty and creative in their training, try to de-escalate, use their rapport. Sometimes that can happen, but, you know, to say that, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars, and why should we have them? You know, try making a call for service in the city at any given time, you could have multiple units tied up, and the response time could be half hour, forty-five minutes, or an hour before they get to the school, so I like the fact that you're in the building, and that you're responsible for assisting in, in, in what goes on in, in the schools, but, you know, as far as, you know, the meetings, again, I think that should happen with staff, with the principal at least, beginning of the school year. Whether it has to be monthly, I, I, you know, sort of, I'm sort of ambivalent to that, my colleague raises, you know, it gets looked on negatively, however, we just heard in three years, there hasn't been any reports, so, I don't know how you qualify looked on negatively when we don't know whether or not that's actually happening. And if people are feeling that way, then that's an issue on our part, we need to do a better job of communicating with our side, so that they don't feel that way. I don't think any staff member should feel a certain way, or feel looked on negatively for raising an issue that they feel is important to the safety or the environment of the school. So I, I would hope, Mr. Superintendent, you can reiterate that to your staff, that if there are issues, to please communicate those in, in, in an open manner with the SROs or the supervisors, and that if it can't be resolved at that level, then obviously we'll bring in, well, the chain of command on both sides, and it'll get addressed, I'm sure. I think the, I think it works, um, you know, I, I think we need to continue to, to work on, um, the job that's done in the schools in accordance with this, and if there are changes needed, we'll make them. Mr. Superintendent, and then...
Just two, two things, one, the, the issue of the reporting on that last page, basically the MOU essentially says that the SROs will write reports that get submitted to the FRPD, has nothing to do with us, that's what that language says, right? Provided to the FRPD, but if I wanted to see a report, they would provide that for me if I was asked, but there is nothing in here that, that says anything about reports being written and given to principals, this says to the FRPD. Secondly, I just want to be real clear, I know we're on TV, the overall sixteen buildings, and I encourage you to come and, and visit them with me, um, it's, it's a very rare occasion that we, we have crisis that does involve immediate response of the police in the school. In terms of arrests, we talked about summons, yes, but actual arrests, we'll probably a handful this year. There were a couple, a couple arrests of adults not associated with, 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 with students, but the, the schools overall, I, I believe, are very safe and orderly. I think our own personnel, meaning the VPs, the counselors, the teachers, the security staff do a great job of maintaining that, uh, balance of, uh, of, uh, uh, safety and security and order, while also, you know, allowing kids to be kids, uh, at times. So I don't want anyone to walk away thinking we have a crisis in school, yeah, we always have room for improvement, but I can tell you that, that, uh, we have a great team in place. The SROs are, uh, uh, you know, it is everyday communication, they're talking to my people, we're talking to them, when we're unhappy about something, they hear it. If I get word on something, I don't care who, someone in the neighborhood says something to me about something, I, I bring it forward, and, and we have those, uh, communications, so there's, you know, I, I have no complaints on, on what's happening right now, although, uh, I, I'm definitely interested in continuing to figure out ways that we can do better to ensure that we're, uh, that we're, uh, always being, uh, proactive and responsive to the needs of the, uh, community, but I haven't, and again, I just want to be real clear, not, I had, I had not one. You know, for principal, that's a problem, principal handles. Uh, I'll give you an example, uh, Ms. Shaw at the stone wanted more, the president's at the stone. I made a call, sergeant, yep, done, boom, we, oh, she's been great, he's, you know, so, so those kinds of things we fix, and, uh, and, uh, I have no complaints, you have any complaints, Kevin?
No.
No? Mr. Agan, I'll leave you the last word for the chief and sergeant.
Just in response to what you said about the reporting, the word, the language says, give the reports to the FRPD. Reason why I bring that up is because we're reviewing the MOU, I think that we need to get some more reports to the school staff, that's why it's not in there. I'm requesting that we look at it to see if we should add something, that's all, I know what it reads, it says it to you. My thing is, when do the principals get a chance to see those things, that's all, summary, something, something minor, but I had wrote down a note for myself to make sure that I tried to leave here today with some clarity, and maybe I'm not going to, but if you could at some point send something to us via the superintendent, so all the committee members get it. But your position as the chief on the change in the law, and what the, um, position is for the SROs related to that new law, whether it's crime, things like that, is that something that you could get to us, not tomorrow, but?
My opinion?
Yeah. Just so that we're, I just wanted to get some kind of, um, clarity on, here's the, here's the police department's opinion on the law, what we can do, what we can't do, because I know that we've talked tonight about some of the things, and I do, personally, I don't think that those things have happened a hundred percent across the board, so we can do better, but I'd rather at least get something from you to all the committees, so we're all on the same page, to say, here's when we can step in, and here's when we don't, and I think it will help everybody to clarify.
Sure.
With that, I yield.
Chief, you give a final word, sir?
I'll just say again, uh, I think we did have a good year, um, there is always room for improvement, and I do not take any offense to anything that's been said tonight, or I hope with suggestions to anybody about ways that this can change to work better for you, we're satisfied with how, how it's been going, but, uh, and the only thing I will say is, if you can let your people know, if there's a problem, we just, we need to know about it, we'll address it, and as the superintendent should describe, if there's issues, we, we address them, so. But I look forward to the coming year, and, uh, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Chief, Sergeant.
No, I really have nothing to say, except, uh, just to let you know that the superintendent and, uh, Mr. Pacheco also have my cell phone number.
We talk a lot.
As does Mr. Coogan. So anybody that needed to get ahold of me, they, they had my cell phone number.
Congratulations, I'm not sure where you're moving to, um, surprised you were able to contain, contain your excitement for this, for this meeting, but, uh, thank you for, for your service to, to the students in the, uh, school system, and, yeah, supervisory, you know, responsibilities for, for the staff, we appreciate it. And I think every sergeant, I think that I've been in contact with as an SRO supervisor, you know, they've always been really receptive. Whether I've seen them in these forums, I've seen them in the community, they're always willing to talk, education, what's going on, so, thank you, uh, chief, as well, but no further questions or comments, we'll wrap that up, again, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item for discussion is the summer schedule on inspection of schools, I'd ask that that be placed on the agenda, uh, because my understanding is that right now, the city has four inspectors, building inspectors?
Uh, three.
Three.
Three building inspectors, one wiring, and two plumbing.
So I just know as the summer starts to wind down, their ability to free up from what they're responsible for doing on the city side in order to get into our schools to make sure that our annual inspections are done, can be, uh, difficult, so.
Yes.
I was hoping that we could put together a schedule, it looks like it's already done.
This is tentative schedule, um...
Has that been, has that been agreed upon by the city?
Better than fifty percent of those dates are available, um, better than fifty percent of these are available. I, I would ask that you put an asterisk next to Talbot, Tansey, Durfee, and RPA, because they all have construction going on, so the inspectors are in and out of there already.
Right.
That process is gonna be a lot quicker there, the issue here is, is they're working around their own vacation schedules, so it's not one person that's gonna do all the inspections, it's gonna be, they all will assign certain schools.
But I guess my main concern is, have these dates that I'm looking at now?
Yes.
Are these coordinated with the city?
Yes.
These aren't just dates, did someone said, okay, we're gonna do these on these dates?
No, these dates have been coordinated with the city, however, as I, as I put in there, that they, they're subject to change based on availability of the, so somebody calls in sick, that inspection's not gonna happen that day, because no one's gonna be available to take.
My main concern is that.
Oh, yeah.
All the inspections are done.
This is much earlier than it's ever been done.
Right, and that was my purpose for asking that it be placed on this, because I know historically, it's been an issue where.
It has.
And I've heard some of those complaints, not only from our staff, but from the city side in years past.
And they've been very shorthanded.
Right.
So I think that...
So that's why I asked, I wanted, now it's July, we can coordinate with them, vacation schedules, whatever they have going on their, on, you know, on their side, so that we have a better sense, and again, if we don't do funds on, on August first, and we do it on August second or third, at least it's done.
Yeah, every school will be done before we go in, as you well know, we get our occupancy permits, you know, relatively quick, we also are doing some things that we've never done before, like the load, you know, usually a generator goes down, and we, we end up with an issue, so this is all preempting all of that stuff. Eventually, it'll be every school, they don't have the ability to do every school now, because they're trying to coordinate it with fire, uh, police, and, and because when, when that generator goes down, they want a full-blown inspection of the building, and to make sure that everything that's supposed to be on the generator is on the generator, if the elevators go dead, all that kind of stuff, so that process has never been done.
Right, and I'd rather know that in August, rather than the second week of September, so, that was my, my ask, I appreciate your work and, and whoever else helped with this, so.
The building commissioner, yes.
I thought about asking that they, they come to the meeting, but as long as we're communicating with them, what our needs are, they know what isn't, they're putting these dates on their schedule, coordinating, so that we're doing them efficiently, timely, in, in a, in a preventative manner.
Yes.
I'm content with that. Anyone have any other questions regarding that?
No.
Mr. Pacheco, anything else you want to add on that?
Um, no, that, as I said, there's some, some inspections that are gonna happen that haven't happened before.
I would just ask, and if you wanted to go to a full committee, I can, we can make that request tonight, but if you can just give the committee a report just prior to school?
Absolutely.
On an update on whether or not they've been done?
Yes, I will.
So that if someone comes to me later and says, hey, was this school inspected, or what's this, I can be assured that they were done, so.
By schedule, we're going to have three, we could have three to five schools that are not gonna be finished prior to the next meeting, which is the seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken.
It can be in, it can be in the superintendent's, it can be in the superintendent's.
I'll put in a Friday memo, because I want, he's doing another memo for me, just so you guys know everything we did this summer.
Yeah, so if it's attached to that, or following Friday memo that just says.
I can do that.
This is where we are with inspections, or as they're completed, if you want to pass them along to the superintendent, you can add them in the meeting, at the bottom of his memo, on a Friday, just saying, just that this week, these three were done, and then at the end, just summary of, of all of it will be fine. Is that so?
Quick, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, the load drop generator checks?
Yes.
Can we try to schedule some more of those, I know, because you just said it hasn't happened.
Yeah, what he's gonna do is, he's gonna schedule, he wants to schedule at least two.
Right.
His issue is that he doesn't know whether or not he has the personnel to, to be able to do all of the, the buildings. We also are concerned that if we do a load at one of the occupied buildings, it's gonna be later on, once we finish summer school, the extended, extended school year for, like, Henry Lloyd and a couple of the other summer school areas, so he's willing to do as many as he possibly can, we're gonna guarantee two.
That's great, so my concern is that moving forward, that maybe during, if, if it's possible during a vacation, let's do one or two, and following vacation, maybe do one or two. Then when we know if this equipment's functioning, that way if something happens and we lose power, we can still maintain the ability to educate the students.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Further on that? Last item scheduled on the, uh, agenda is discussion of Derby High School pantry signage.
So the signage, uh, the, uh, the paperwork that you do have is what Stop &amp; Shop has suggested, it can be in its entirety, it can be as little, you know, as you'd like. There's nothing there that would bother the school department?
So I'll, I'll just be brief, I don't mind any of it, except, the only one that I had a concern with is the forty by forty inch, you know, student, write what your, what the food pantry means to you, there's gonna be like a blank slate of paper with markers where they can kind of write. I mean, to me, I don't think it's necessary, I'm okay with the other signage, as long as it's, you know, appropriate size, it looks like there was some ref, some renderings given about what's gonna go over the door and stuff like that, I, I just think, I understand the intent, but if you leave, you know, students can get creative.
This is inside though, so that would be inside the pantry, so when parents and students came to pick up their goods, they would have an opportunity.
Someone gonna supervise what's written on there?
Bob cutting, so, so Bob would be there, but...
I thought it was just gonna be on the wall, where students can walk by and write, because it's gonna become a, a tablet for, for creative art.
No, this is something that...
I'm not opposed to creative art, I just don't want things getting out of hand, where, something is written on there, and it stays there for a period of time, before someone catches it and realizes, gee, that may not have been appropriate for the setting, so.
Right.
And it doesn't say Stop &amp; Shop on it, it's white, it's just a white sheet, it's just a plain sheet.
It really doesn't belong in this. It's there, it's what, it's what they would like to see, because they want feedback.
But that's Bob cutting's responsibility, like, it's not...
It would be Bob's, right, yeah, this wouldn't be Stop &amp; Shop.
So this is like an ongoing suggestion box?
Exactly.
So rather than writing, put in a box, we're gonna write it, as long as someone's monitoring it, and we don't end up with profanities and all that stuff.
If it's, it's a situation that it becomes a problem, then it can disappear.
That's all, no issue with that?
Yeah, so I do think it was, what I've looked at is tasteful, it's not, like, over the top at all. The one that, the mission statement that I see, and it says, uh, Stop &amp; Shop Food Pantry, working together, I don't, the wording doesn't really matter, but is this a for of a school department pantry, supported by Stop &amp; Shop? Like, it's an outbuilding, it's not, so, let's say, for instance, uh, Aldi wanted to donate a whole bunch of stuff they just opened, and we have a Stop &amp; Shop food pantry, we might limit ourselves, you know what I mean, I'm thinking just to flip it to, it's the for of a school department food pantry, supported by Stop &amp; Shop. So that if we could say it's also supported by Aldi insurers and whoever else.
I'm not quite sure that Stop &amp; Shop has that in mind, nor did I, I mean, it's a two hundred thousand dollar, yeah, it's a two hundred, right, it's a two hundred thousand dollar investment for Stop &amp; Shop.
This is their thing because of their location in this region.
I think that's, that's the presentation we, we voted on.
Exactly, yeah, I don't, I don't...
I was in the understanding that it would be, not, I'll say exclusive rights, if you will, because I don't know if there was, if we go that far with it, but I, I think there was some, some understanding that it was their baby, their project, their investment, and we were, we were partnering with them to provide this to the community. If I missed that, then...
I, I, all I can say is that the district is, is extremely, um, pleased that Stop &amp; Shop is willing to do this, but we're gonna service sixteen schools, a hundred and sixty families to start, I think that number will grow very quickly, and I don't think that, that we're gonna run out of need. So if someone else wanted to come forward with some other idea of how they'd like to help families, I think that that would be a decision that the committee could make at that time.
Yeah, middle school.
Right, there could be something else that, that could be created, I mean, um, the Donors Choose piece, um, is a, is a good avenue for, for other, uh, companies to get involved.
Nothing in there's gonna be other than what Stop &amp; Shop brings in.
Right, we're not providing anything.
We don't provide anything, how about our locations with our stuff? Stuff that gets donated now, look, we walked through the other day, there were socks and...
That's not food.
I get it, but I'm saying is...
So that stuff is handled either through the parent, the PACE, most of that stuff is handled through the PACE.
So, this is gonna be in a totally different...
This is a building in itself, this room is in, by itself at Durfee, and it's strictly gonna be for, um, a, for, lack of a better word, a warehouse for Stop &amp; Shop to provide us with items that we feel parents need.
I get it, I'm not trying to be opposed to it.
No, no, I know what you're saying.
But the way that it's being worded is, is making me sort of opposed to it, because it seems like we're not gonna have anything to do with it, which we are gonna have something to do with it. We have to staff it, we have to...
We don't have to staff it, so basically, Bob cutting is going to just do, uh, Whitson's is just going to do the inventory, but students in, um, different classes will use this as community service, putting the bags together, and then we will be delivering it when we deliver lunches or breaks to the schools. So are we putting extra time in to do this, I think that, that cutting is smart enough to be able to get this stuff where it needs to go, without adding any cost to the district. go without adding any cost to the district. I, Stop &amp; Shop came up with the idea, we didn't solicit this. If anybody else wants to come up with an idea, then I guess that, you know...
Hey, I'm not opposed to it.
No, I know.
But, it's a, it's a for of a school department building, that we're going to be giving out food to our families, that's supported by Stop &amp; Shop.
But, it is our families and not anybody else's, so it's not a pantry that students from other schools...
Right. For a school department, food pantry, supported by Stop &amp; Shop. It's not Stop &amp; Shop's food pantry that's located in our school.
It was their idea.
It's a marketing issue. They're not going to put their name second on it.
No.
They're making an investment, they want the recognition.
Or share. But, it's like Amazon wanting to donate, or General Electric, or any of these corporations that anchor, they have these give back, like stuff for construction does it, you know, because they got the construction projects here. They give back, they did stuff for, you know, our kids and gave them all hard hats and all that kind of stuff. This is that same kind of spirit. It's their program, it's what they bring in to communities when they move there.
So, we are voting on it today. We will vote on it at the...
Only because the policy says that you have to approve signage.
Correct. So, we're certain precedent if we vote. So, that's why it's not this only issue, it's, whatever we vote on this, we'll have to be consistent, if we want to be consistent with our votes, on other things.
This is just signage, though. The vote has already been taken.
I understand.
The pantry has been approved as a Stop &amp; Shop pantry, so all that we had to bring to subcommittee was the signage, because that was a request that signage we looked at.
Right. Signage has to come before the committee.
But, I don't know, I don't know how to say it.
I know what you're saying.
It doesn't, whether you call it, whether we voted for it, or whether we didn't vote for it, it's the for of a school department pantry, and you're not going to get me to believe otherwise. It's supported by Stop &amp; Shop, it's not Stop &amp; Shop's own food pantry, it's a school department thing, it's supported by them. So, if we had to, in the future, put signage up for somebody else that supported a classroom and they said, you know, "I'm going to donate 50 computers," and we say, "This classroom's supported by so-and-so business," I don't have a problem with that. But, if we, we wouldn't put it that this is their classroom, we would, you know, I encourage advertising, I encourage all of that, but I just don't think it should say that, so, that's fine. I'll just vote against it and call it a day.
Mr. Hetsel?
Anybody willing to make a commitment like that for our families? They can put signs up like that in that level, it doesn't bother me personally. Their intent is awesome, they're trying to help out, and I think I'm very happy with that. Anybody else bringing that same level of commitment for our families, I'd be more than willing to do the same exact thing. I yield.
So, motion to approve or refer it to the full committee?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, any further discussion?
I'll just reiterate my point, that it has nothing to do with what they donate. That's not, that's neither here nor there. It's a permanent thing, I think we should have one anyway. So, if we do this, if it's Stop &amp; Shop's food pantry and Stop &amp; Shop goes belly up, we don't have a food pantry anymore?
No, we won't have a Stop &amp; Shop food pantry.
Correct, because we shouldn't have one in the first place. With that, I yield.
Anything further?